Okay, it's seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to the June 4th Special Joint Meeting of the Town Council and the Planning Commission. This is going to be a study session about the new housing laws and related matters. So as a study session, this is a little more informal. The idea is to kind of, they're going to present and we get to ask questions. And, you know, we're not planning to have any kinds of motions or anything, but staff will be collecting ideas. So feel more casual and willing to speak your mind and ask whatever questions. So with that, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please. Or not a vote, a roll call. No voting. I just said no voting.
Thank you. Good evening.
Councilmember Barbara Spector.
I'm here and I vote yes.
Commissioner Mary Bajami.
Ditto.
Councilmember Rico Sayak.
Present.
Commissioner Kendra Birch.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Kane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Lee and Artis.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine Janoff.
Here.
Commissioner Melanie Hansen.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Rennie.
Here. Okay, so I will start off by immediately handing it over to our town attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Planning Chair and Commissioners. Tonight's study session, we will be reviewing recently enacted planning and housing laws and additional pending legislation that is currently pending in front of legislation right now and may further impact what the town's land use decisions that we are undertaking right now. Tonight, we have John Gotts, John Bakker, and Victoria Iyany from the law firm of Myers-Navy, and they will be giving the presentation. John Gotts has over thirty years' experience in real estate, land use, environmental redevelopment, affordable housing, and municipal law, and has been involved with numerous housing developments and programs involving both affordable and market rate housing units. He's currently helping the town not only with this issue, but with the Ditto's property and with the parking garage and other issues that are very complicated that deal with our redevelopment agencies, and is here to help us through tonight's study session. We also have John Bakker, who oversees the work of all of the Myers-Navy city attorneys that the firm serves throughout the state of California. He's also currently the city attorney for the city of Dublin and also represents many special districts. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John and John. We can call it the John and John Show, and they can introduce themselves. So you can try to keep them separate. One's spelled with an H, one's not, so that might help you.
Excuse me. Did we want to do verbal communications before we do this?
Yeah, I guess we should. Is there, we'll go back to-
You could either do it now, or you could wait till after the presentation. It might be helpful to take those after the presentation, so they have the input from our council.
I think she was referring to items not on the agenda.
Okay.
So let me see. You don't have any cards, I assume. Would any member of the public wish to address us on an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that and go back to, turn it back over to John.
So, I'm John Bakker. That's John with an H, and we're very happy to be here. We brought Victoria, who is one of our summer clerks this year, and she helped us out a little bit with research, and we're going to give her an opportunity to present a few of the, one of the sections as well. So I hope you welcome her as well. We're very glad to be here, and I happen to have a lot of experience with some of the same issues that this town has with the Housing Accountability Act, because Dublin is right in the midst of dealing with the Housing Accountability Act lawsuit of its own. Just as I was looking at my emails before starting here, I got a summons from the California Renters Education Foundation, I think they call themselves CARLA. They are, in addition to the developer who is already suing us on our Housing Accountability Act project, the NGO CARLA is also suing us on the project. So we are going to have even more experience than you all have with Housing Accountability Act lawsuits, unfortunately for the city of Dublin. We've learned a lot about the Housing Accountability Act, as the town has as well. So I'm going to be talking on that. John's going to be spending a lot of his time talking about the housing element law and some of the recent changes in that regard. I'm going to focus a little bit more on SB 35, some of the recent legislation that came down last year that's also housing-related. And so with that, I'm just going to start with why we're here, that housing affordability problem. Why is the legislature so focused on housing in the last two legislative sessions, and currently as well? This isn't a new phenomenon. The issue with regard to housing affordability has been something that's been on the legislature's agenda for many years. In 1980, the housing element law was passed, and at that time, the legislature declared the availability of housing to be of vital statewide importance. Housing was already an issue all throughout the seventies, but in 1980, it was really, instead of it just being a state policy that was suggestive, the housing element law really made every community meeting its fair share of housing, the state's housing needs, it really sort of forced it down to locals. So forcing local jurisdictions to accept some of the burden of housing development in the state. So the point of this slide is really that this issue's been around for a long time. It's not anything new. It's become a focus, housing in California's become a focus around the nation. McKinsey, one of the large consulting groups, recently issued a report that the legislature's been focused a fair amount on, that suggests that the state currently has a shortage of 2 million units that will increase to 3.5 million by 2025. The basic gist of the McKinsey report is that housing growth isn't keeping up with, keeping pace with population growth. That's the problem. Economists say that, you know, with supply and demand, California's not as, it's just not as effective as a state in terms of its economic power if it's unable to house those that would like to move here. So McKinsey suggests various tools to meet the, and this, the reason why I have this up here is because the legislature's been very focused on this McKinsey report. And we'll see some highlights of that later on when I talk a little bit about the governor's race. The legislature's been very focused on this report. You hear about this a lot at legislative hearings. And so this is the gist of what the tools that McKinsey suggests, California, the state, used to deal with that 3.5 million dollar shortfall, or 3.5 million unit shortfall. The first is building on vacant urban sites that are already zoned for multifamily development. That's really nothing. That's just continuing with the status quo. There's already urban land that's designated for multifamily. Just build that out. That will generate, what is that, 3.5 million units approximately. The other suggestion, and this is from last year, 827 was a big deal, or earlier this year, 827 was a big deal, intensifying housing around transit hubs. That's where you see a lot of the action. If you really want to build a lot of units in California, intensifying around housing units, or around transit hubs, is where you can generate a lot of units. So if you look at that, that's a big factor if California wants to deal with the housing problem. That's maybe the most effective tool in the legislature's toolkit. The next one is really second units. Add units to existing single-family homes. That, if you look, that's a pretty big number. And then the fourth tool that they suggest is adding units to underutilized urban land that's already zoned for multifamily. That is, the suggestion is that there's that many units available in multifamily designated urban land that's underdeveloped. It's developed with multifamily housing already. It's just not developed to as high of intensity as it could be developed. So I think they're really thinking about places in LA, places in San Francisco that could be developed more intensely. And then finally, just the typical greenfield new subdivision development would generate, I guess that's 6 million, not 6 million, 614,000 units. So that's what's been suggested by the McKinsey study that the legislature's been focused on. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to talk a little bit about last year's legislative housing package.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm John Getz. That's J-O-N, the other John. And just so you kind of distinguish between us, John comes from really a city attorney background. I come more from the background of working with particularly redevelopment agencies when they still existed, and cities in getting housing projects developed within the jurisdictions. And, of course, the, you know, with redevelopment being phased out in 2011, 2012, cities lost a big tool for how to get housing done within their jurisdictions. There have been a lot of ideas floating around for a long time that would be seen as a replacement for redevelopment, as well as some of the other tools that might be available. And it was just interesting. In 2017, we just got this explosion of legislation. It all happened at one time. And part of it was the legislature seeing this report, but I think really, there clearly was a sense in the legislature in 2017 that housing is a problem. We really have to do something about it now. Almost every legislator had their own housing bill, and fifteen of them passed and were considered a package of housing legislation. And we just wanted to talk about, we're going to talk about several of them in more detail tonight, but I just wanted to, before we got going really on the detail, just wanted to kind of give you a sense of the landscape of what got passed. And there's one group of bills that are focused more on funding, and particularly funding of affordable housing. And the most significant ones this year were SB 2, which was, which is known as the Permanent Source Bill. And this is the bill that you've heard about, that imposes a $75 per document fee on real estate documents that get recorded anywhere in the state. This is, and there's an exemption for real estate documents that relate to housing purchases, but every other type of real estate document, including real estate financing and refinancing, does get included within this. This is expected to generate 200 to 300 million dollars per year. It gets split between the state and the cities and counties. The idea behind this was, has been, has been talked about for many, many years, and there's long been a desire to have a source of funding for housing. Does not depend on an annual appropriation from the legislature, because we all know that's not dependable. Doesn't depend on a statewide bond measure being passed, although that's still something that the housing advocates like to see, and we have one on the ballot this November. Those bond measures get passed, the money gets spent, and then the money goes away at that point. The idea here was, we need a, need a source of funds that's always going to be there year after year. And that was the idea here. The, in the first year, the funds that are generated in 2018, half of the funds are going to go to the state, but half of the funds will go to local governments, to cities and counties, including, the town would be eligible for those funds. They can only be spent in that one year only for, for planning purposes, and specifically for planning efforts that are aimed at streamlining the approval of housing. And after the 2018 money is spent, 2019 and beyond, 70% of the money will go to cities and counties. It'll be distributed on the same basis as cities and counties receive CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, from the federal government. So it'll be basically an entitlement. Don't know exactly how much the town or any other cities and counties will receive, but it will be a significant amount that you'll get year after year, and it'll be available for a variety of uses. And it's, and it's a very broad authority to use that money in the ways that you want to use it. It's not a state-directed fund. It really is, the town will be directing its own funds, which should be a nice, very nice mechanism. The, we think that funds will, many of these funds will be spent for things like the local government contributions to multifamily affordable housing, to the very popular first-time homebuyer and homebuyer assistance programs that tended to go away after redevelopment and those funds dried up. We think that many local governments may use this money for homeless programs and projects as well. The funds can be shared among jurisdictions, unlike what happened with redevelopment, where each jurisdiction had to use its money in its own boundaries. With this money, it can be shared. Homeless programs could be a very, very nice use of these funds. So the next, next bill, just wanted to, as I'd mentioned before, the legislature put a statewide bond measure on the November ballot. It's a $4 billion measure. One billion of that goes to the veterans mortgage programs, Cal-Vet programs. The other 3 million go to a variety of mostly existing state home programs, most of that affordable housing, but also infrastructure programs and things that have worked well in the state in the past. So, you know, if that passes, we would expect to see a lot more activity in that realm, and particularly in affordable housing using those funds. And then also wanted to mention the bill, I think it's actually AB 1505, right, rather than 1515. I think we made a mistake there. But anyways, the, you may have been aware that in the last, last 10 years or so, there was a, there was a state law case that prevented cities and counties from enforcing inclusionary housing obligations against rental housing. And inclusionary housing, of course, is, is the program that local governments can adopt to require a certain percentage of housing built within a market housing development be set aside as affordable housing, or often an in-lu fee can be paid. You have in your town the BMP program that does just that. But over the number of years, this case called the Palmer Case, said that cities could only, could not do that, could not enforce that against rental housing due to the state's rent control law, the Costa-Hawkins Act. And, and the legislature, finally, after a number of years, said, no, we specifically want to basically overturn that case and allow you to do that. Looking at the town's ordinance, it looks like you're, you're free to, to just impose that against any multifamily projects that you have in town. But, but that was a very significant thing. And, and then there was another set of bills that were aimed at the acceleration of housing development and streamlining of local government approvals. And John Bakker is going to talk in some detail about the key bill on this, the Senate Bill 35. And, and there were some other bills that were passed. In addition to that, they were aimed at allowing local governments to set up their own housing districts that would streamline housing production. And those primarily worked by, by having the local agency set up the district, do the SEQA work up front, and then, and perhaps a zoning act, and one of, requires a specific plan to be adopted. So basically, the area would be pre-zoned, pre-cleared environmentally, set up an area that developers just come in and do. We think this can be done through other means as well, but this is, this was one of the sets of bills. The third set of bills, in the 15 bills, deal with local government accountability, and they primarily deal with the, the housing element of the general plan and how the housing element itself is, is enforced. And, and I'll be talking, Victoria and I will actually be talking about how the, the housing element, regional housing needs assessment numbers, the RENA numbers, are established, and, and we'll talk about some changes to that process, and some of the other requirements that go along with that. John Bakker will talk about the Housing Accountability Act, which you're all familiar with since it was, and the central issue in the North Forty project in town, and how there are some changes to that that are aimed at, at strengthening that law further. So, do you want me to talk about that, or are you going to do that?
Okay.
Okay.
So, just a little bit about where, what the legislature's been up to so far this session. There's a fair number of bills that we're going to be talking about later and getting into a fair amount of detail, but just a couple of highlights here. We saw a lot of news articles, I think you all probably saw them, about SB 827, which was that transit-rich bill that basically would have legalized multifamily units around, preempted local jurisdiction around transit sites. It wasn't just limited to barge stations and light rail, but included bus stations that, or bus stops that had a very good service. Very controversial throughout the state. I think the leadership decided they just weren't, they didn't, they didn't have the stomach for it this session with the governor's race, and that bill died in committee. I, given the, what's in the McKinsey report, and the fact there's a governor's race going on right now, something like that is probably coming back at some point. Probably not this term, but something around transit-oriented development is probably going to be on the legislative agenda soon. It looked, after 827 failed, that a lot of the bills were being watered down. But just recently, over the last week or so, the legislature has moved along a few bills that have passed out of both houses. So it does look like there are some fairly aggressive housing bills that are still on the legislature's agenda for this year. And we're going to talk about those in a fair amount of depth tonight. The other thing I wanted to point out is the governor's race has had a lot of focus on housing. There's a link here, it's not really a link, you'd have to type that into your browser, but I gave you a short link, so you didn't have to type the whole thing. That's, that's an article in the LA Times that has short summaries of all the candidates' housing policies. The thing I wanted to point out primarily, though, is that both Gavin Newsom and Antonio Bierigosa are proposing 3.5 million units by 2025, which is taken directly from the McKinsey report. So they all have housing plans, and Newsom and Bierigosa are trying to meet the standards set by the McKinsey report. So I don't know what that means for the future administration, but it's certainly an issue right now in the governor's race. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about the housing element law.
So as I mentioned, we're going to talk about housing element law and, and talk about some changes. But basically, the, the housing element law boils down to a couple of basic principles. The state is telling local governments that they all need to plan for the housing that is, that needs to be built within their boundaries. And the, the basic idea here is that each local jurisdiction must accommodate its share of the regional housing need for each, each income level. And there's, it's a very complex law, but really, that's what it boils down to, I'd say. Now, Victoria's going to talk about the, really, I think with the key part of this process, which is the RENA process, and how it applies to the town.
Hi. So, the regional housing needs allocation process is on an eight-year cycle. The town's current cycle ends in 2023, meaning that the next cycle will be from 2024 to 2031. So initially, the process begins where the state determines the regional housing needs assessment, works in conjunction with the Council of Governments, ABAG, for that final assessment for each region. Then ABAG will then determine the allocations for each jurisdiction. They'll take into account a variety of factors, such as local housing data, population, employment, et cetera. And with that, they'll also adopt a methodology, which then, finally, the local governments will adopt housing elements as part of their general plan, which will accommodate their share of the RENA. And so in this, there will be certain sites identified, and this allocation will be split amongst different income groups. So there's four different income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. And as you can see here, the town's total RENA number is 619. And as you can see here, the town's total RENA number is 619. The final column over here shows to date what the progress is for the town in reaching that 619 goal. So here we see the sites inventory as well as strategies. So, in this town's housing element, it outlines which sites the RENA will be applied to, and how that, it'll be executed by these strategies. So, as you can also see for the low-income category, there is a higher projection for the housing needs that will be met for that income group as compared to what was actually assigned in the RENA. And now I'll turn it over to John.
Now, the no-net loss in zoning density law is an element of the housing, part of the housing element, essentially is an enforcement mechanism to make sure that after the city, the city, county, town has adopted its list of sites that are available to meet the RENA, to meet the regional housing needs allocation, that no changes are made to the, the zoning designation or general plan designation of those sites, such that there won't be sufficient sites available in the future to meet those RENA needs. So it's really about maintaining enough land zoned or designated to meet the RENA numbers. Now, as you know, sometimes developers come in and, and apply for approval of a project on one of these sites that's, that's in your list of housing element inventory sites. And they, they might, they might apply for a project that goes all the way up to the density that, that you have projected in your, your housing element inventory, but sometimes they won't. Sometimes it will be a lower number. Sometimes, in the process of approval, the, the town will want, and will, will work with the developer to approve a lesser number of units. Sometimes a developer will come in on land that is zoned and designated for housing, and ask for retail or commercial uses. So, what, and then, sometimes the city, county is going to condition approval of development project on, on building a lower number. So, so, again, the, the no-net loss law basically says, you can, you can do this, you can lower the density on these sites that are in your housing element inventory under certain circumstances. And you have to make findings if you're going to reduce the density or permit the lower-density development. And that is, first, this is consistent with the general plan, and second, that the remaining sites are adequate to meet the RENA numbers. So let me just, just take an example. I mean, if you, if you've got a pro, your, your housing element inventory, say for, for the very low-income units, shows 45 units coming from the South Bay project, 156 from the North Forty project. Let's say that the, the developer for the North Forty, which has done 50 units at this point, something like that to date. But let's say they came in and said, well, we, we don't really want to do that many very-low-income units. We don't really want to do 156. We want to do 100, say. Now, if the, the town were to approve that development application at 100 very-low-income units, it's now got to look at, go look back at this housing inventory and say, what does that do to that? Does that give us enough land that the other developers can meet the, the very-low-income RENA numbers? And if we were down to, say, 100, only 100 very-low-income units on the North Forty site, and 45 on the South Bay site, there wouldn't be enough, you wouldn't get to 201. So at that point, the, the no-net loss law says, you've got to, first, find additional land that's available for the very-low-income projects. If you don't have that land zoned right now, you can still approve that project and make a finding that the, that you will, in the next six months, 180 days to be specific, zone or redesignate additional land to meet that. For the very-low and low-income categories, that's a little trickier. That land needs to be available at, at the, at least the minimum density of 20 units per acre, and it's got to be available, basically, as of right, without requirement for CUPs or other discretionary kind of permits. But that is something you need to do. And, and the, I'll go forward a little bit here. The changes in the law over the, in, in 2017 were not really that dramatic, I think, because this law existed. And I have to say, I don't, I don't think every locality really followed that. I think the legislature felt that many local governments were not really ensuring that they still had that inventory of sites available they needed for meeting their RENA numbers. And what the legislature said here is, when you make these findings, basically have to, you have to do the math. You have to, you have to do a, an analysis, a numerical analysis of each of those numbers, the same numbers that were up, that we showed here, and see what you have now after your approval of that project, or whatever action that the town has taken. And, and so while, while it's not a tremendous difference in the law, I, I think it was the legislature speaking to local governments and saying, we, we really want you to pay attention to this requirement more than you have in the past, and make sure that, that you really do make these units available.
John, before we, is it okay if, this mayor here, I, I think some people are dying to ask some questions about this subject. I, I know your presentation's very lengthy, and kind of waiting to the end, we might sort of forget. Is it, is there convenient places to ask questions in here?
Yeah, I, I think because we, because we're dealing with a lot of different subjects, it would probably be better to, to ask the questions while we're on that particular bill or subject. So, yeah, that would be appropriate.
So you're ready to move on from the, that particular subject, so we could ask questions now, then?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I think we, let's go with Mariko.
Thank you. I've been dying here. Okay, so I want to follow on the last slide you did that showed our housing element. And so I, I, I'm going to look to you as well as our town attorney, and I'm going to use a recent example that we've all lived through, which is our North Forty specific lab.
Right.
So in there, we have, as you mentioned, we are going to get 49 very low. Now, we did say in our housing element, 156. And in our argument, we argued that, that because of this very objective table that you have in front of us, that was a reason for the initial denial. But how does this no-net loss work? Because obviously, we can't force it to be at a certain income level, even though the density didn't change. So are we still responsible, even though the density didn't reduce, but the affordability didn't meet the original intent?
Yeah. No, and that's a good question. And I think it's, it is, and that, that's one of the, the basic problems of the housing element law, is that what you, as a town, are given these numbers that, that, you know, of, of regional housing needs, numbers that you need to create the conditions for, you're not the one that builds the housing, that's the private developers that do that. So, so here, the, the issue is, you, let's say you, you approve, as we're, as I was saying in my, my example, you're approving less than 156 very-low-income units, because the developer came in and said, I want to do 50, or I want to do 100. That's all I want to do. And your choice there is to go back and say, we, we need you to do 100, 156. Or, no, we'll approve your, a project with a lesser number, but then we'll go back and find some other land in town that's suitable for the very-low income. So another developer could come in on other land and, and apply for a project that included those very-low-income units. So, again, you're not responsible for making those units, being built by that developer necessarily, but, but you would be responsible for ensuring there was sufficient land available so those very-low-income units could be built somewhere in the town.
It looks like the town manager wants to add to this?
We just wanted to clarify that our approval of the North Forty application occurred prior to the no-net loss law that is now in effect. So we do not need to find a replacement site. If we did, I think Steph, we would have an idea about how we would demonstrate that to the Housing and Community Development Department, but this law went into effect January 1, 2018, after our approval of North Forty.
And I should probably say, I mean, I probably shouldn't use the North Forty as the example. I should probably use the other, because the North Forty is enmeshed in a lot of litigation, a lot of court findings, so, and I'm not familiar with any of those things. So I threw it out as an example, but really, the better example would have been, let's say, the South Bay, and take the same situation. Now, the South Bay developer comes in and, with a development proposal, and it includes zero very-low-income units. So then your question is, what do we, what are our choices, choices there? And, and it's the same kind of issue. You know, would, would the, you know, you would, you would be able to approve that project with zero very-low-income units, but you would need to find a site for 45 very-low-income units elsewhere. And it could be either available at that time or within the next six months.
John, isn't it the case that the way the, the no-net loss works, it's about units? It's not, not about the income level of the units? So...
No, it is actually, the, the law clarified, the new law clarified that it's very much oriented toward the income level. You have to account for each income level, each of the four very-low, low mod, and above-mod income levels, and make sure there's sufficient land available for each one of those. That may be new as of this year, I, I don't know, but that's clearly what the, the new legislation is about. And again, it's, you know, if, when you, that development proposal comes to you, you're going to have to do that, you're going to have to redo this chart and see where you land up.
But I guess the other, the other point I want to make about this is, it's, the way the housing element law works is a little bit unique, because you're just supposed to set aside, you're just supposed to designate land for multifamily development, and then you can count it as very-low or low, and it's really up to the development community to either produce market-rate housing or, or affordable housing on that site. But you get to count it as affordable. So, it, so if you don't produce very-low and low-income units on that site, or if a developer doesn't produce it, then you got to go find another site for that type of development somewhere else in town.
That's the way I read it, yeah.
So Councilmember Sack, did you have a follow-up?
And perhaps I'm jumping ahead, but when we're talking about future legislation, are we going to be talking about 828?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll save my question.
So I saw Commissioner Birch next.
So in looking at this and the numbers that we would have to meet for very-low or low, I was wondering if there is anything within the bill that allows for a town to file for hardship during certain times, such as now? We have a 30% increase in labor and a labor shortage, and I'm talking about builders and, and service. Materials are hard to get, we have this threat of tariffs. So if a developer comes in to develop a property, which our property values are not going down, and all this is going up, as a developer, I might say, I'm not going to do very-low, I'm going to need to do moderate to make this financially feasible for me, too.
Right.
Are we, as a town, allowed to file that as a hardship because there are extenuating circumstances beyond us, but we still want the housing?
Yeah, again, in, in that circumstance, I believe you would be able to approve that project that you mentioned, the, the moderate-income unit on that, let's say, on that, that South Bay site. And then, there's really nothing in the law about hardships. What the law would say, it still is, you got to find the alternate site somewhere. And, and because, because a question came out about the SB 828, there, there's, there is, there is a bill that is pending in the legislature this year, AB 820, SB 828, and that has been moving through the Senate. I think it moved through the full Senate. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's moving to the Assembly now, right? And originally, this bill came out and said, we want, the state is going to require each local government to come up with a housing inventory site that covers 200% of your RENA numbers. Well, that just, that wasn't going to fly, but it's been revised down to 125% of your RENA numbers. And that apparently is flying, at least it went through the Senate. And so, so that would mean, and I, that, and I don't know when the requirement would take effect, if it would take effect on the next time that you adopt a housing element, which for the town wouldn't be until 2024. If that's the case, if you had similar RENA numbers, you can see that you had 201 very-low-income units. So this bill, at 125%, would basically require you to identify sites that would accommodate 250 units of very-low. And same for the, the low, you'd, you'd have, you know, 25% more, which would be about 140 units total. Moderate would be 160 units or something like that. And this is a bill that you're going to want to follow carefully, because it is going to have a drastic impact on your, your zoning and, and, you know, what you're going to have to designate. Again, I'm not sure if it's something you'd have to do immediately in 2019, or if it's something you'd do the next time around in 2040. Do you, have you studied that?
Yeah. It, it's not going to apply until your next cycle. Who knows, they might move up the cycles. I just have no idea at this point. The one thing I wanted to note about it is that it's being pushed by the Bay Area Council and the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. I didn't realize that, but it was originally, I just thought it was a Scott Wiener bill. He's been all over all this stuff. He had 827, 828, and 829, and 830, 831. But this bill is actually being, being pushed by the Silicon Valley Leadership Group and Bay Area Council, which are the big business groups.
Yeah.
So can we, let's go to Councilmember Spector for a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a feeling I know what the answer to this is going to be, but looking at that chart, one of the issues that came up with the North Forty was that, that a sense that not an objection necessarily to the number of units, but the fact that they were relatively expensive, and, and that they were not satisfying the below-market-price population. Within that context, let's say, is anybody in the legislature giving consideration to something like, we look at South Bay, and we're supposed to have 45 very-low, rather than saying that the town has to come up with 45 very-low, and if they don't, we're going to have some kind of penalty that you've been describing? Is there any consideration to requiring that the developer develop within these numbers, and that the town be able to condition the development with the... and that the town be able to condition the development with those numbers?
What do you think about that, John? Yeah. Because, so could you, so ultimately, could you, could you require developer, could you, could you deny a development application that did not have the required number of, of very low-income units in it? What would you, what would you do about that?
Or is there any legislation that's even thinking that way?
I haven't heard of any legislation like that. I'm sure you'd face some kind of takings claim if you tried to do that.
So, so we tried to base our first, our lawsuit on that. We used this chart, and we hadn't talked about this yet, we used this chart as one of our objective standards under the Housing Accountability Act, and the court said, "No, it's not an objective standard, the density level that you have and the other setbacks and all of that are objective standards." They did not consider this chart an objective standard, it was only in our housing element as based on our RENA's numbers.
Yeah.
Now, could we, could we do some other changes? That's, that's, we'd have to look into that, and there could be an argument of downzoning. You'd have to change our whole below-market rate program, because, you know, how, with the North Forty is, is they were required to do a percentage. That's what our law just basically says, that's our objective standard. You have to provide so many affordable housing based on the number of units you're going to build, and that's the 20% that we had, I believe it was 20% or 18%. And so that's how many units North Forty had to build. We never had, had said, although we have these charts in our housing element, we didn't say, "You have to build these numbers." So the question, Councilmember Specter, is, is can we say, "You have to build these"? I would be concerned that that could be seen as a downzoning or a takings claim for someone, because even though we have these North Forty numbers, considering we were going to only allow 320 units on there, and that half of those are going to have to be below-market, if we would require North Forty to, to build all three of those categories out, it, it would have probably been seen as a takings claim in it, in and of itself. So we can certainly look into that. It's, it'd be a different concept to somehow make that an objective standard and see what other jurisdictions are looking at to see.
Yeah. And I have to say, the, the housing element does have other provisions in it that are really aimed at facilitating very low and low-income housing. And, and in reality, the, the way to make these projects happen is not through zoning it that way, but it's, it's through providing the financial assistance that's necessary to, for the, the financial gap that makes the project being built. The housing element standards of the state do require, and I'm, I'm sure that your housing element does at least address the issue of, of where developers could, could come up with the resources necessary for the, for the very low-income housing. And that's, that's the real way these things get built.
Maybe if I could ask my question at this point, you know, it's, it's obvious to me there's a disconnect between what the state certified as our housing element and now what's being required. You know, there's been, I've heard discussions about, well, how much can we require, how much affordable can we require the developer to, to, to build? And I've heard numbers like, maybe we can push it to 40%. You, you heard our current law is 20%, and then which level they build, it's all about economic feasibility, and you suggested we throw in money. This is a lot of money.
Yeah.
Not just in Los Gatos, this is across the state, and you see how hard it is just to get, you know, a few billion dollars. This would take many, many billions of dollars to, to be able to do this. There's, there's a real disconnect here. This says, if we really have to meet these numbers, we have to zone five times the number of units so that the developer can afford to build the low-income ones for us. Yet, when we put our housing element out there, they didn't make us zone five times the number, they made us just zone this number.
Right, right. And again, the SB 828 might be looking at you zoning additional land so that there's additional places these can be built. You might also be following the statewide bond initiative in, a bond in November. That is going to make additional funds available that might, might make these very low-income projects feasible. But, but Mayor, you're correct, I mean, it does take a lot of money and to, to make these things work. And typically, it does take a very large contribution, generally from local government or sometimes from private sources, that don't require immediate payment, repayment of those funds, and probably repaid over many decades, as opposed to what a commercial lender's going to require. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult thing, and it, and it's, the, the housing element law does not get these projects built.
Well, I guess that was what I was going to say. Nothing requires you to spend money or actually build projects or force projects to be built. If a developer proposes something, and it doesn't get built to the density anticipated, then you got to go find another site to rezone for more development. So that's your outlet, you may not want to do it, but that's what the state expects the, the town to do. So it's not about spending money, it's not actually about producing the units, it's ensuring that the sites are available to be, to meet the, the need.
But with, you know, our town is decently built out. We were fortunate to have the North Forty and the South Bay site. After that, we start to run out of, of sites. If the developer says, "I own this property, I want to build none of them affordable," they don't take the bonus, but they use up everything we allocate, and we got to go find another spot. We could be building houses forever and never even meet this.
Yeah, and, yeah.
That's definitely one of the criticisms of the, the housing element laws, it, it just requires you to plan. And so you see a lot of, on the margin of these changes that are being made, are designed to actually make it, put more teeth around it, so.
Yeah. And, and that's actually a really good segue into the next area we want to talk about, and, and I don't want to cut off anybody's questions, but that is, the standards for the, the sites in the housing element, those also changed with legislation that passed last year. And, and this is, again, another area where the legislature was saying to local governments that they didn't believe that these lists of sites were real, were, were sites that were, development could realistically be pursued. And, and in this bill, AB 1397, the state imposed a lot of new changes on the types of sites that could be put into that housing element inventory. So it's going to make your job more difficult, not less, and, and combined with the SB 828, if that passes, where you now have to do 125% coverage, it's going to be very difficult. But some of the, some of the changes that this bill imposed were requirement that the sites have adequate utilities. I think most of your sites would, would fit that requirement. Restriction on sites that were not vacant. And housing element inventories often have a lot of sites that are already built on, but look like they're, they're sites that could be converted to housing. And then, of course, in the Bay Area, and in, in, you know, the areas, built-up areas of the state, there are a lot of commercial properties, retail properties that, that really are suitable for conversion into housing. And many of these sites, many of these site inventories have those kind of properties. The, the state, though, here is saying, "Okay, it's fine, you can put those sites in your inventory, but if you, if, if you put it in one housing element cycle and nothing happens, then you either can't put it in the next time, or you've really got to prove to state, the Housing Community Development Department, that this site is real, that, that there's some real possibility that housing could get built on that." And perhaps that's by looking at current development trends, or looking at ownership patterns, or other things that might be persuasive. There's other restrictions on the size of sites. Very large sites are of 10 acres or more, or very small sites of a half acre or less are generally not considered sites where low-income or very low-income housing can be built. So there are restrictions on use of that. There's, there's restrictions on sites that, that, it's, some housing elements use as part of their sites, development rights, airspace rights over existing, existing, okay, over publicly-owned sites. I mean, you might have, say, a, a town on parking lot or something like that. You may have retail, and, and you may include that as the site, so that the building could go up, could go vertical over, over that land. The, again, the state is saying, "You can do that, but we're going to restrict that," and there's a, there's a, there's, they're putting limits on the non-vacant sites, they're putting limits on the use of the, the airspace sites. And, and again, the, the general idea is, you can, you can still do these more exotic kinds of sites that are not just raw land, but they're, they're something that has to be converted into housing. But, but state's trying to make it more difficult to do that. And they're, and housing community development is going to come down on cities that try to use that at least for, for more than one or two housing element cycles.
And, and if you recall, John, wouldn't be familiar with this, but if you recall, when we were going through our housing element update, that's somewhat what happened to us even before this law was in effect. We had designated sites, and HCD's review of that draft said that they didn't believe these were real sites, that they were not vacant, they were, they were being used for commercial uses, and we were going to use those as some of our sites. And what that required us when it came back is where we did transfer quite a bit of that to the North Forty, because at that particular time, we saw that that development was going to be built. We had already, either through the CEQA or through the EIR, and we, we somewhat knew at least where we could put those units. But, so we were in that little circle before this law even came down, and that's why some of our housing element even mentions that by right, because the HCD said, "Not only do you have to designate these sites, you have to make some of them by right." And that's, we, we chose the, the North Forty because we had the specific plan done, so.
And that's, that's really a normal experience for other cities and towns, counties, you know, who, with, with HCD really coming down on, on those sites more restrictively than the local governments choose. So, you know, that is, that's, your experience is, is pretty much within the mainstream, I'd say. But again, states making, is, is attempting to hold your feet to the fire on these, on this housing element site list. So it is, you know, there, there will be times when your town attorney is going to tell you, "Yes, you can approve this project, but you're also going to have to re, you know, re-designate these sites so that we, we stay within the no-net loss of, of available sites." So...
I, I know Commissioner Hanson had a question. Can we go, go with her question before we move on, if you still have one?
Thank you.
I just want, I sat on the Housing Element Advisory Board when we did the last Housing Element, and it, it was sort of like, when we were going through this process, it was very focused on production. And so it, it's sort of like a shell game in terms of the actual affordable housing, because as Mayor Rennie pointed out, the real issue is the economics for the affordable housing. So, and, and then you have the Housing Accountability Law that says that, that the production is more important, and we found that out in the case of the North Forty. So where, where is this thing coming down? Where is the pendulum swinging? Because 30, 3.5 million units, all this need for affordable housing, and, and when you look at how the housing element was processed, the way that, that affordable housing production was determined was by dwelling units per acre. There's no dollars or anything in that, so...
Right.
Is that going to change? I mean, because when we, we tried to make it more affordable, we weren't even allowed to put in our housing element to require 40% of affordable housing on any of those sites, because that might have limited production. So, I'm just trying to understand where the pendulum's swinging on this.
Yeah, there is that delicate balance. And I also wanted to mention, I, I talked about the legislation on the inclusionary zoning law, and how it authorized cities and counties to, to now adopt and enforce inclusionary zoning for rental housing. That law also includes a provision, at least for new inclusionary zoning requirements, that any city or county which adopts an ordinance that requires 15% or more than 15% of the units be devoted to low and very low-income housing, that, I wouldn't say it's presumptively invalid, but the, the city or county would need to actually undertake a study to show that the requirement does not unduly restrict the development of market-rate housing. So the fear is, you adopt too high of an inclusionary standard, and now you're going to, you're going to cut off any, any other market-rate housing, because it just, that will be too expensive at that point, too. So it, you're, you're on to a very important point, which is, you, you know, even if you're trying to accommodate affordable housing, you can't implement that in a way that prevents market-rate housing from being built.
So it's not changing? That it's going to be focused on production, but, but we're going to have to...
I think that's right.
But, but, but there's going to be more scrutiny over having replacement sites so that if something like the North Forty happens, and, and we don't have the opportunity to put the, we'll, we'll have to create a, move the shell somewhere.
Yes. The, if there's, if the pendulum is swinging any direction, it's clearly toward more state oversight, more state enforcement of these laws, and more private enforcement. And John Bakker's going to talk about a couple of the methods that, that are, where there's private enforcement of these kind of provisions as well. But, but that's clearly that, clearly that, it's becoming more and more difficult for local governments to, to deal with this. And, and, and maybe that's a, maybe that's a good segue at this point for, for John Bakker to come up and talk about the Housing Accountability Act and, or SB 35.
Okay. Thanks, John. Did you want to talk about any of these other bills before we move on, or?
Let's skip this.
Okay. We already talked a little bit about the Weiner bill. I, I think on these, there is something very important about SB 828 for communities like Los Gatos and some of the other communities in Santa Clara County. If you look on the right-hand column, it basically suggests that when ABAG does the next round, it's going to be pushing more units away from lower-income communities, and more units in the lower-income categories to the high-income communities like Los Gatos. So you'll see that in this bill, 828. And you also see something similar in AB 1771, which is the Assembly Bill that deals with the same types of issues. They, they show up in kind of different parts of the housing element law, but this concept really comes from another report that came out of the Haas Institute at UC Berkeley that suggested that high-income communities weren't accepting as many units as the lower-income communities in the last round of ABAG allocations. So you see that in both of these bills. The key thing about these is both of these passed in the last week out of the Assembly, and this one passed out of the Senate. So these bills are, they seem to have some momentum from leadership. These bills are kind of, they would need to be reconciled if they both passed. I think there's some issues with the way they, they both sort of get at the same issue, so they have to be joined up in some way. But anyway, that's what, I, I just want to highlight those two things about these bills. I think those are key things that Los Gatos needs to be aware of. Okay, so the Housing Accountability Act. You all know a lot, I think, about the Housing Accountability Act. Everyone in this room, probably, knows more about the Housing Accountability Act than most jurisdictions in the state. I didn't know much about the Housing Accountability Act until the last six months, but I spent a lot of time looking at those words right there, and... and explaining that to my city council in Dublin and how it impacts and what rights it gives a developer when they're pursuing a project, what rights it gives a developer, what rights it gives a, an NGO to pursue litigation against the city if it denies a project. Basically, the way the Housing Accountability Act works is if a project complies with applicable objective standards and criteria, you can't deny it unless you make the Housing Accountability Act findings. It basically takes all those subjective findings that we're all used to using when we look at projects, particularly under the Subdivision Map Act and some of our design review requirements that talk about suitability and neighborhood character and all those things. I take them off the table. If a developer can demonstrate to you that they meet all the other objective standards, then you're forced to, uh, either approve the project or try to deny it, making these findings. You have to find that the project has a specific adverse impact on the public health or safety. There's no welfare word in there, which is usually public health, safety, and welfare is the types of findings that we can rely on when we're exercising the police power. The broad, uh, welfare power is gone. And then the Housing Accountability Act has been tightened up still more so that you, it has to be specific, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable. It needs to be based on existing written standards. You can't just, you can't just make up new health and safety findings. You have to have some existing written standard that you're relying on. And then you also have to find that there's no feasible method of mitigating that impact other than a denial in order to deny a project under the Housing Accountability Act. So a little bit about the most recent changes to, um, the Housing Accountability Act. In 2017, there were a few, these are pretty significant changes. Objective standards determinations now have to be in writing. That's, I think, almost every city attorney would recommend, that objective standards findings be in writing anyway. But, um, I think the other key thing here, though, is that those determinations have to be made within a timeline. And then if you don't make them within that timeline, that, that it can, the project can be deemed approved or the object, the, the standards can be deemed to have been met. If the standards are deemed to have been met, you're forced to approve the project anyway. So you're kind of stuck with it, or you try to make the Housing Accountability Act findings. So, so that's a key change, a very key change under the Housing Accountability Act. The other thing it did is the density bonus. Technically, when you, when a developer's performing, pursuing a density bonus project, they're, they're producing a certain amount of inclusionary zoning units. They get a density bonus in exchange. They're not complying with your ordinance. So they're not technically meeting your objective standards. The bill's revised to say that even though you're not, they're not meet, when they do a density bonus project, they're not meeting your ordinance. It's still considered consistent with the objective standards.
I would add, that clause was probably put in because of our case,
because we tried to argue that exact argument. And although it wasn't accepted, it was certainly heard as that possibly being an argument that.
That's a theme in this, in this legislation. The, the cases, the, the advocates that were pursuing this Housing Accountability Act had a lot of examples that they used to get, uh, language added to, to the Housing Accountability Act. The reasonable person standard for, uh, the compliance with standards determination was added. That just makes, it's just a lower standard for, uh, the advocates to, to prove that compliance with standards. It's become easier to pursue, to use the Housing Accountability Act on a project that contains some component of commercial or office. So as long as two-thirds of the square footage of the project is residential, you can rely on the Housing Accountability Act. We'll come back to that when we get to SB 35. It clarifies, and this is the Berkeley example. Berkeley lost the Housing Accountability Act lawsuit, and then they tried to deny a demolition permit. So the legislature's revised the bill to say, look, we're talking about all permits, not just, you know, development permits. They changed the evidentiary standard from the typical, uh, standard of, uh, substantial evidence to preponderance of the evidence. It's a very lower, much lower standard or much higher standard for the agency to meet. Much lower standard for, well, we have the burden of proof in this particular case, but a lower standard for the proponents of the bill or, or Housing Accountability Act project. It also authorizes a court to order approval where the agency acted in bad faith. Generally, in a, in land use litigation, um, the courts will respect the agency's discretion. And at best, will order the, order the case back to you, remand it back to you and say, hey, look at this project again in light of my decision, and then let you figure out how to deal with the project in that case. If the court finds you acting in bad faith, they can order you to approve the project rather than exercise your discretion, remaining discretion on the project. And then if you don't comply with the court order, and I think you have to do that within 60 days, if you don't comply with the court order, the court can impose, uh, $10,000 unit fines. So in Dublin, the Carla Group, the local NGO, they show up, they count the number of units in the project, and they say, we're going to, we're going to get you for 2.5 mil, I think it was 2.2 million dollars if you deny this project. That's not really how it works. The court, the, the court only has that jurisdiction to issue the $10,000 unit fines if you first lose the lawsuit, get a court order against you, and then you don't comply with the court order. But those fines can be substantial. And then finally, these groups, the NGOs, uh, are entitled to attorney's fees if they prevail in, in litigation now. It wasn't always clear before.
Hey, John, can I mention something? Another important thing that, on the attorney's fees provision is, um, historically, there are two parts of the Housing Accountability Act. One relates to just affordable units and approval of affordable units. The other relates to market rate units. And I think, I think your North Forty project was probably about the market rate units. And until this year, until this legislation, if you lost, if the town lost a Housing Accountability Act lawsuit on the affordable, for an affordable project, you could be made to pay the attorney's fees of the, of your opponent, but not if you lost, uh, one of those cases for one of these, uh, market rate units. The law changed this year. So now, uh, any developer can get attorney's fees in these cases, whether it's affordable or market rate. And, and combined with what John mentioned, the, these outside housing groups also being able to get the, the attorney's fees, you got to think there's going to be a lot more litigation that's going to come down on this, in this area. And it just, it's something to keep in mind if you ever get in a Housing Accountability Act challenge, again, God forbid. Attorney's fees is, is going to change the economic calculus for you quite a lot. And, and a lot of that is based on this change in the law.
So, and that's another change that was because of our lawsuit. If, if you recall, after, after we did not prevail in that, they filed the motion for attorney's fees and were seeking 600,000 in attorney's fees. And they were awarded zero because we proved that this was not an affordable project, which under the HAA required 20% affordable. And we were, we actually backed out the density bonus, and it came only to 18%. And so it was a very unique argument to get there, and we prevailed in that. So they weren't entitled to their attorney's fees. And that's why they've now changed the law to say, if there's any, uh, action brought under the Housing Accountability Act, it'll be awarded attorney's fees regardless of whether it has the affordable or non-affordable, so.
So I, I think this legislation was primarily passed by the housing advocate groups, the YIMB groups, Carla in particular. They, they were behind a lot of this, uh, language and proposals. So this year, though, the BIA, the CBIA, the California Building Industry Association is behind this bill, 3194. And it just makes really clear that these health and safety findings are just very unique. They're not going to happen every day. And it goes to great lengths to try to demonstrate what they mean by that's, doesn't, it doesn't happen every day. So there's very high threshold, rarely arise, regularly occurring planning issues are not what we mean. So, so that's one of the focuses. I don't know if there's a specific example of why they came up with that language, but I, I haven't seen any examples, but, so anyway, this is BIA's, uh, language. The other thing that I think is really interesting is often you'll have a general plan that allows a range of densities within the medium density designation or the high density designation. In fact, many high density designations don't have a maximum density at all. They'll just say 25 units and above. The legislation, if it passes as proposed, would say that developers can rely on the maximum allowed in the density category of the general plan, notwithstanding what the zoning says. So Los Gatos's zoning probably often says, notwithstanding what's in the, the range that's allowed under the general plan, it might allow under the zoning half that, uh, something at the, at the midpoint or something, you know, in between as a maximum. This language would say, no, you don't have to worry about the zoning. You can rely on whatever the maximum is at the general plan so long as that general plan, uh, language or density cap was adopted in the last 10 years. So I think that's a pretty unique and, uh, actually very important provision of this bill. Don't know if it'll pass, but this one actually got out of the assembly as far as I know. Yeah, I checked, all these bills made it out of their respective houses in the last week. So, um, anyway, that's an important bill as well under the Housing Accountability Act. So. Question?
Yep, go ahead, Councilmember Sack.
So one of the questions that has been asked constantly. Housing Accountability Act, it applies to two or more residential units. And one thing that hasn't been made clear yet, does an ADU count as one of the two?
Well, your city attorney and I have talked about this a couple of times. And, um, I don't, I, if I'm a developer, I'm going to argue it does, uh, because it's two units.
Has it been tried yet?
Huh?
Has it?
I haven't, I haven't heard about it being tried. I actually think somebody can argue that a single-family unit is entitled to rely on the Housing Accountability Act. I haven't seen anyone try to do it, but the way it's worded, it's not perfectly worded that it only applies to projects of two or more. But if you proposed a, if you proposed a, a project that included a primary unit and a secondary unit, and they were both in compliance with your code, I think you could have a good shot of, of relying on the Housing Accountability Act's language that says a pro, uh, what is the language? Housing development project is a use that includes residential units only. I think, I think one would have a good argument.
We'll tell you that. I've requested HCD, they're putting together kind of a white paper or a, you know, policy statement on a lot of the bills that have come out. And they're supposed to be out this summer, and that's one of the issues that they're, at least don't provide guidance. Now, that's not law. And, and I've requested some legislators to try to clean this up. This is really, to me, needs to be cleaned up exactly what they do mean by residential units, because I've, you know, talking with all my colleagues, they seem to have takes both ways. They know it, it needs to be more than one lot, but, but certainly residential units includes two units on one lot if they were, you know. So it's the answer we don't have yet.
We have arguments. Lawyers like to have arguments. So are there any easy Housing Accountability Act fixes? What do you think? No, no, there really aren't. But there, there are some mechanisms that towns and cities and counties can use. And I haven't come up with any brilliant, easy fixes. I know a lot of cities are looking at adding view standards and objectifying some of their longstanding subjective standards, and that's certainly something you want to do. And that's bullet number two, developing additional objective standards. If you have some existing policies that you've applied, can you turn them into objective words so that you can apply them? The other thing, though, to think about is the first bullet. Just reevaluating your existing zoning and general plan. Is it too, is it too loose? Are your regulations too loose that too many projects are going to be compliant with, meet objective standards, and you're going to have to approve them? That's something you might want to consider. And then the last thing is, is a more of a creative idea where if the Housing Accountability Act applies, you really lose the ability to have the traditional design review that you're used to, where you're actually looking at finish and features and stuff in a project. And so you maybe could look at downzoning or, or just providing some opportunity or incentive to get people to elect to, um, accept design review in exchange for some kind of incentive. So that's something some of our clients are talking about. The particular client that's pursuing that is in an area where there's a lot of demand for high-density residential development, is sort of a downtown area. And so those developers, because of the value that they can get out of the high-density projects, are willing to, uh, in exchange for some upzoning, uh, will accept design review. Because if, if they know what's in that box and, and that it only means design review and not no to the project, to the units generally, um, they're probably likely to go for something like that and opt in. It's really going to have to be an opt-in, though, mechanism, not a, not an opt-out. So those are the ideas we have. I don't know if anybody on staff has a better ideas, but, um, you know, you guys have a list of your objective standards. You have a fairly long list of objective standards, but even with those, there might be projects that would kind of slip through that you wouldn't otherwise want to approve. But, uh, but that's what I have, that's what we have for now. And we're, we're going to continue working on this over the, over the next few years because, um, I think the Housing Accountability Act is going to be enforced over the next decade. You've got a, YIMB groups out there that are really focused on it. You've got developers, the BIA now focusing on it. It's just, uh, it's a whole new ballgame. So I think all of us are going to be faced with trying to create objective standards that do what we've done in the past to, to evaluate projects. Any other questions on this?
John, this might be a good time to take a break. I have a couple, a couple members of the board here that need a break.
Okay.
So maybe we take a five to seven minute break?
Thank you.
So we have lots of time for more questions? Or even more time for a break later on?
Mr. Mayor, when we stopped, I think there was a question down on your, on your right.
Commissioner Badami, go ahead.
I'll make one. Is there anything in the pipeline with the state with them wanting to make all this housing regulations? What are we going to do with the traffic? Anything to help us out with that?
Well, I think, no, I, I don't believe so. I, I know the state's trying to spend more money on transit and I think that's the response you would get from the legislature.
I think I saw Councilmember Spector first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may have been the person on this end, okay? Again, I am assuming, I know the answer to this, but I will ask it. You on page 15 of our handout have the, the not easy fixes.
Yeah, not easy fixes.
And so we have wording in our ordinances like character of the neighborhood, harmony with adjacent development. And I, I get that those aren't objective, but I'm assuming that other jurisdictions and lawyers and law firms are working on architecture and site and ordinance, subdivision, map ordinance wording that could be objective. So the first question is, is anybody working on that language so that we could all work together and benefit from it?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about in terms of developing additional objective standards and trying to take some of your traditions and mores and turning them into really objective words that you can use and put in your codes and rely upon them. Whether any agencies are working together on that, I don't know. I think the way it usually works is one agency takes the lead, writes something, puts it in their code and everyone else steals it from them. I do know some of our clients are working on it. They haven't gotten too far. I know Berkeley, for example, is working on a view standard. I don't know if that's going to go anywhere, but they'll probably put together some text that will be useful to others. I remember being on an HCD call recently and the HCD staffer said, do any cities have objective design review standards? And there was a deafening silence on the call and nobody offered anything, but I know a lot of agencies are going to be working on that because that's, I mean, there's a lot of things that you do that are incredibly subjective that you can't apply if somebody pulls the Housing Accountability Act on you. So I think there's a lot of lawyers around the state that'll be working on that, my office included, and I'm sure Bob and Joel will be working on that as well.
And I think there's some, you know, there's some cutting-edge ones. I think the view protection that, that Berkeley is working on. I've got one that says it's a standards for shade studies. It has all different requirements that is very complicated though on, on how you do shade studies determine. Again, it kind of deals with that compatibility and privacy issues that sometimes we get. The difficulty is with the design standards and Joel and I were talking about it, yes, you can make objective standards saying the second floor has to be set back 10, 15 feet. The problem is that's, you know, now you're, now you're really boxing yourself in. Sometimes that's not what you want. Maybe that isn't what would be compatible with that neighborhood. So it is something difficult. It is, it's something we're wrestling with each day and I think the first bite of it's going to be during the general plan, you know, rewrite that we're doing in the next year and we'll continue to keep looking at ways we can tighten it up. I think also, and at least I'll give you my anecdotal information for the five years I've been here is, you know, but I don't see it when it comes in as an application. I don't see how hard staff works to try to get it in the box. But I would say, you know, all of our projects that come forward to planning commission usually fit within the box. We don't get variances like you might see in other communities trying to do something or even major exceptions. So I guess my first thing is, is what is the box that we're using and is it, is it what we're looking for? Are they too loose? And make that determination on high setbacks and, and far and, and, you know, the densities in certain areas before you strive to get into these very difficult shade studies that we just don't have the staffing to understand or the development community to understand. So that would be my two cents at the time where we're at right now.
And then, you know, I'll just add my two cents as well. I meet monthly with colleagues from Santa Clara County. We're all asking the same questions. Okay, who started? Who's gotten anywhere? And so I'll have that conversation again next month, actually next week. And so, you know, there is a big push because it's not just us who's interested in, you know, high-quality architecture and privacy issues and those things. But as town attorney pointed out, it's, you know, if we don't like what can be built in the box, we need to change the parameters to shape that box. And though, there, there's a number of ways that that can be done, but there are also a number of trade-offs and it really, once you start messing with that box, it really reduces flexibility, whether it's setback for a second story, then certain architectural types you can, you're no longer going to allow unless you allow variance. So, you know, those are the, the trade-offs and the struggles that, that we will keep going through, but you know, the simplest ones are those numeric coverage, height, FAR setbacks. Those can be looked at and then we can get some information and input from council and then ultimately take that stuff through planning commission if we're interested in making zoning code amendments prior to even the general plan update, going through its process, going down the separate process we talked about for objective standards in the general plan that can catch up. We can make those changes prior to completing that update. So I think we have plenty of options. We just will ultimately have to get some direction from council as far as which path they want us to pursue.
And then also, as you know, I sit on the Housing Economic Development Committee for the League of California Cities, which is meeting this week, so we'll be going over these bills again. But I, I'll go back to the, are they interested in production? Are they interested in affordable housing? Remember really who is sponsoring these bills? Our lobbyists and where are those lobbyists coming from? They're coming from the building industry and they're just interested in production. In fact, they don't really, if you want affordable housing, what they say is, and you need to find us funding for that. And that's kind of where they handle it. They get the other bills that will, will provide funding. Same with transportation, you know, yeah, we'll be happy to build it, but you need to find us the funding, which was SB 1. So, you know, that's, they're, they're interested in bills about production, not really about affordable housing, although they might say they are. It's more about production.
So Commissioner Hanson has been dying to ask a question. Go her next.
Well, so talking about these objective standards, we were just talking about some, you know, applications that we've heard in planning commission and if you, I mean, even the North Port is a good example of this. If, if you wanted to start to influence the affordable housing, one thing you could, can do in your zoning code or, or, you know, plans is reduce, you know, force or reduction in the size of the units. And that way, in theory, they should be less, more affordable because there's so much cost per square foot to build and everything like that. How would that, i- if, if we were to go down a path to do that, I mean, how, how would that be viewed by these, by the, you know, California legislators? You know, if we as a town kind of went through our standards and, and, and made it more restrictive to build and so as to force smaller units and hopefully more production?
So would the intent to be to allow the same footprint, which is smaller units? Or?
Yeah.
So that would, that would increase the density, but there would be smaller units? I, I don't see why HCD or anyone would have a concern about that.
So as long as the density increased?
Right.
The idea is, is if you have 28, 20 units per acre, no, you just make the units smaller so you have more open space on that, which might be an impediment to development because a developer would say, I can't recoup my investment in this property and therefore, but if you were going to increase the density?
Right.
Forty units per acre, then I don't think there would be a problem from a state level.
Right. And if you did require additional open space in exchange for those smaller units, HCD would have an issue with that, I think, too. But it would create more affordable units, no doubt about it.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you. Actually, that was another question I had. Thank you down there. Let's assume for the sake of this question that these people up here at the dais want more housing, but they want housing that really does satisfy an objective of below-market price units. And these people up here are willing to put in to their ordinances, their laws, a square footage of, let's say, 500 to 1,000 square feet. But then you're the developer and you stand, sit, stand up there and you say, well, that's not going to pencil out. And does anybody ever examine what does or does not pencil out or do we all accept it?
That's a good question. I have had occasion to examine developers' claims that things don't pencil out and usually things do pencil out more than they say they do, but often the margins get a lot thinner and development projects are risky, particularly when the delivery of the units is actually two years down the line if they're building multifamily projects. So they're taking a lot of risk. They're also borrowing money and if the, if the market goes bad on them in the midst of a development, they could be in a world of hurt when they try to get their permanent loan. So, you know, you can explore those things. This idea about the smaller units and penciling out and I don't know how one would go about exploring that because there aren't a lot of units like that in, in communities like this where there are smaller units. It would be hard to figure out, well, what, what are those units going to rent for? What are they going to lease for? What are they going to sell for? It would just be a difficult exercise. But I know in the redevelopment context, they used to hire consultants that would do those kind of pro forma analyses to see, you know, whether the projects were going to pencil or not. So I guess there are consultants like EPS out there and who are some of the other people that could do that kind of analysis. So if that's something that council and the commission wanted to pursue, there are economics firms, real estate economics firms that do that kind of work.
But couldn't we as a legislative body just say we want smaller units and that's going to be our ordinance?
I, I think that this concept of affordable by design has been around since the 70s where if you're trying to, if you're trying to encourage the market to deliver more affordable units, one way of approaching that is to say, we want more units that are smaller, that are meeting the needs of single people that want to live by themselves or small families or, so, so that is, I think, something within your police power. I don't think there's anything in the housing element law or anything else that would prevent you from adopting a zoning code that focused on the size of the units.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sack?
So I want to explore this a little bit because I know with the League of Cities and I appreciate our, our own council is going to be there, they've been talking about, I don't even know what the right word is, but their fear is designated, designating parts of town to be the affordable site. So are you aware of anything where, let's say we said, okay, 1,000 square feet max. Are you aware of any rules that prohibit certain segments of town only versus having that apply townwide? The last conference I went to, I know there was a lot of discussion and I can't remember the, the legal terms.
I haven't heard that, but there's, there's always this issue in affordable housing and community development about pushing all of the affordable units into a particular segment of the community. So you, so maybe what they're talking about in those conferences is, is ensuring that, that the affordable units are spread throughout the community and not sort of pushed in a I live in Alameda and I actually live on the west end of Alameda. And all the affordable housing is on the west end. And I would have thought HCD would have had an issue with that. But in fact, the housing advocates all are from the west end and they wanted the affordable housing there. So just looking at it from the outside, I would have thought the exact opposite, that the affordable housing would have been throughout the community of Alameda. But it's all on the, on the, on the west end. Bill, do you have any thoughts? I thought I saw you leaning forward.
No, no, you're doing great. Thank you.
Okay. So that's all I can offer on that. I haven't heard anything about this, around this particular issue about smaller units and how that might, whether it has to be done on a citywide basis or not. And John, I don't think John has any additional insight on that either.
Okay, should we move on?
Okay. So the next issue is SB thirty-five. Everyone called this the Weiner bill last year, but then he came up with SB eight twenty-seven. So I think we're just calling it SB thirty-five now. This, this bill is about streamlining, creating a streamlined ministerial process for certain types of residential projects. And the way it works is basically, if you fit within the box that it creates, you get, the project has to be from submittal to qualification determination, you only get sixty days. And then you get another thirty days for design review. It's a ministerial project, so that means it's not subject to SEQA. So that's the basic gist of how SB thirty-five works. But it's subject to a lot of qualifications. I didn't even list them all here, but these are the key qualifications. Has to be a multifamily project. In Los Gatos, it has to be, fifty percent of the units have to be affordable. In some communities where they're not, when they're not meeting their above-moderate requirement, RENA requirement, but the developers only have to produce ten percent of the units, that's a little counterintuitive. But here it's fifty percent of the units, so that makes it a little bit easier. This isn't for greenfield sites, so it has to be seventy-five percent of it has to be surrounded by urban uses. The site has to be designated for residential use or mixed use. It cannot require a subdivision. Whoops. The project, again, like the Housing Accountability Act, has to meet objective standards. And you can only require one parking space per unit. Prevailing wage, it's not applicable to projects of ten units or less, though. So prevailing wage is very expensive, I'm told by developers. I've never actually watched the pencil on that, but it, it does motivate them against projects when prevailing wage applies. And then there's this additional requirement that the project be subject to the skilled and trained workforce requirement. I don't know exactly what that is, but I'm told that it's much like a project labor agreement that labor unions will enter into on projects. So it has a lot of standards that, you know, drive developers towards union-like work rules and things. So, so those are the key eligibility criteria. In terms of how it might be used in, in Los Gatos, I don't think it'll be used much. And here's why. One, there aren't a lot of sites here where multifamily is allowed. Two, it's very expensive, right? Fifty percent affordable, so maybe unaffordable project, developers will pursue it. It requires prevailing wage and skilled and trained workforce. I spent some time talking to Linda Manalini, who's the Eden Housing developer that is pursuing the North Forty project, I think. And, you know, the prevailing wage is a real difficult issue for them. Their projects aren't prevailing wage generally. And she also indicated that the skilled and trained workforce requirement is, is a difficult issue for them as well in terms of making projects much more expensive. There is a little bit of a sweet spot, though, for projects that are affordable rental projects that are ten or fewer units or even non-affordable rental, rental projects that are ten or fewer units. So that's kind of a sweet spot. So if your ordinance allows smaller projects like that, developers might be able to rely on SB thirty-five. But in the grand scheme of things, when I look at this, I kind of wonder, well, why would I ever do an SB thirty-five project when the, when the Housing Accountability Act is such a powerful tool in my toolkit? Why would I, why would I do all this stuff? So I think maybe the Housing Accountability Act continues to be the, the tool most developers rely on. Couple of examples, though. The biggest one being the Valco Town Center project. I'm a little skeptical about this one. I'll explain why. This picture is a little hard to understand, but if you look at it in the context, this is a fifty-acre site. This shows the entire thing, twenty-four hundred residential units, four hundred thousand square feet of retail and entertainment. And then one point eight million square feet of office with a rooftop park. It's a little hard to see, but right in the middle of that site, in between those two parks, there's a big road. And then there's a bridge across the road. So that gives you some context of how big and how tall that rooftop park is. So this is a very, very big project. But I think my question on this one is, is this project really eligible for SB thirty-five? One of the criteria and qualifications that it, is that be a multifamily housing development. I look at this project and I think, is this a multifamily housing project? It looks like an office project driven by, with a few residential units thrown in. They've got some strange calculations of the number of square feet of residential versus the number of square feet of, feet of office. And it, it ends up being, the way they calculate it, two-thirds of the site is residential. And that's kind of the way some of the wording in SB thirty-five is worded. But the qualification is actually that it's a multifamily housing development. And so I think SB thirty-five is limited to projects that are exclusively residential. And that mixed-use language they're relying upon is about what the zoning says. So I'm not sure they're going to be able to get away with this project. But this may be the first time that's been publicly stated. And so I don't know if you want to, want to tell anyone that, but there you go. So this is the other SB thirty-five project that's been floating around out there. It's in Berkeley. If any of you went to Berkeley, you're probably familiar with the Spengers Fish Shop, which actually you can see from the freeway, so many of you may be familiar with it anyway. There's a big parking lot out there. It's been there for years. Kind of wondered, why, why is that parking lot there? Apparently there's a shell mound nearby or something, so the folks in Berkeley have prevented it from being developed for many, many years. So it's been in the EIR process for five years or something. This developer has come up with an idea to do this project on the site. It's a smaller project, two hundred and sixty units. This is along Fourth Street, so if you imagine just to the, this way behind me on this street, there's an Apple store and some nice, you know, shoe shops and stuff. It's a really nice walkable street, Fourth Street. So, so this would basically be a retail and nice residential project. Again, though, I don't know if this is a multifamily housing development because it's, it's got components of commercial and residential. So, you know, if I'm representing Berkeley, I'd probably tell the developer, this project doesn't qualify for SB thirty-five treatment. It's not a multifamily housing development. I don't know what they're doing. I see they're still processing it and evaluating whether SB thirty-five applies or not. So we'll see what they do with it. So those are the two SB thirty-five projects. Does anyone have any questions about SB thirty-five or?
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Sack.
So I want to tie this back to the Housing Accountability, quick fixes that you had mentioned.
Okay.
So even if we were to develop objective standards, if someone, if a developer were to come in with a density bonus, they could ask for concessions against those objective standards.
That's correct.
So.
But they only get those if they actually, if they actually volunteer those units. So they have to do something.
Right. So how, I guess the question is, I mean, it's always a good thing to just reevaluate our own objective standards. But if it can be, let's take, for example, height. Let's say we say forty-five max, they come in with a concession. How much higher can it go with a concession? Because at what point do our own standards get nullified?
Yeah. So it's been a long time since I worked on a concession, Joel, but I think the way it works is the developer proposes a project that bumps up, oh, well, John's here. He can help me with that density bonus.
And I do a lot in the density bonus area, too. And there's actually two, two aspects to this. One is that a developer who qualifies for density bonus gets one, two, or three of these concessions or incentives. And, and those are things they just request that make the project better. The city, the, the standards for granting the concessions or incentives changed in the last two years. And they made it really hard for the city to turn it down. And they, as long as the, the incentive or concession that's requested makes the project, the affordability of the project more feasible, then the city has to grant it. And that's almost always going to be the case. So that's, it's a very tough standard. The second part of this is that beyond the incentives and concessions, there's also a provision, the density bonus law, that the developer can request that any city, town standards of development that prevent the, the development project from being built at the maximum density plus the density bonus units, that those standards be waived. So that if, if the, the maximum density of the project by, by the town code is, let's say, twenty units and maybe five extra for the, the density bonus units, so say twenty, twenty-five units could be built. And the project goes through the design review and the, the approval process and find that, hey, with this design, you can only get twenty-two units on the site because there's setback requirements or height requirements or some of the other things you mentioned preventing from getting the twenty, to the twenty-five units. Developer can come to you and say, you got to waive these standards. You got to, you got to allow me to provide less open space or smaller setbacks or, or greater height so I can get to the twenty-five units. And the density bonus, the state density bonus law says you have to give them that.
And I think, just to add to that, too, I think we dealt with this. It was the waivers versus concessions. And so in the waivers, correct me if I'm wrong, John, they can ask for almost infinite waivers to any of our zoning code requirements. Typically, it's only, you know, I think in the last project it was two or three. And those, so those weren't concessions, they were waivers. And so, you know, we will continue to see that. And I think the, what we learned, well, maybe we didn't learn, maybe I, just me. When the Housing Accountability Act is used in conjunction with the state density bonus law, it is a very powerful tool for a developer. So I think that's really kind of, once you start merging those, it really, really is a benefit for the developer in that case.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
So then to follow up on that, you really can't put any maximums. Like this is our standard, however, in case you ask for a concession, this is the absolute, like, there's no maximum you can ever put, given the concessions, the waivers, HAA and SB thirty-five.
Like a maximum number of units?
Maximum number of anything.
Well, general plan.
I think that what she's getting at more is, is the height one, which I've always wrestled with. It's easy to know where the setbacks can end. It's going to end at the property line. You know where it's going to be in parking, you know, there's only so many they can ask for. But height, you know, in, in my experience, the height has always been minimal. But I think what she's asking for, they've come in and asked for the eight-story building when we only allow, you know, a three-story. And, and I haven't come across where that, where it actually, I don't believe it says exactly at height, how much they can ask for.
No.
But, you know, this is to some extent controlled by the density. You can only go, I mean, the bonus you can only get based on what's the density. So, so there's a physical restriction on it. So it's not infinite. And it's not eight stories probably anywhere in Los Gatos.
No, but I, I mean, let's use Valco as an example. And we happen to know, because we feel our colleagues heartache right now with Valco. I mean, the reason why it's becoming economically feasible is that project is so high. So it's making up for the cost of the prevailing wage and the land price. And so at what point does it become unreasonable? It's going to be the highest building in Cupertino, yet that doesn't weigh in anymore because that's not an objective standard.
And I, one thing I have to say, I don't, I don't, it, this is not clear at all exactly what, what the development standard waiver provision requires. But the way I read it, the, the developer can ask for waivers that get the project to that maximum density with the, with the density bonus units. You know, I'm not, I don't think it's clear that the develop, that every request or demand of the developer has to be complied with, you know, that, that you don't have flexibility to say, well, we, we don't have to increase the height to get you to the maximum density. We can also do that through jiggering the setback standards or by, you know, reducing the open space requirements a little bit. We can get you to that density. We don't have to give you an extra story. And so while, while the law's not clear, you know, I think, I think ultimately it'd probably prevail if you're able to deliver the maximum density in some way that makes the project work.
Last, last point.
But it, it does get a little tricky in the context when you're putting the Housing Accountability Act together with the, the density bonus. It's like, well, on the one hand, they're, they're compliant with everything, so they're entitled to it. So, so, so John's telling them, well, you know, you can't have that, we'll move the open space around. Well, wait, we're entitled to that. So it's hard. It will be very difficult when you're facing a developer that's, that's entitled to a density bonus and concessions, incentives and waivers and is able to rely on the Housing Accountability Act. We're going to be in a difficult position. And then on this one, the height limit, there must, they must not be above the high limit because they're not seeking a density bonus, as far as I know. That, they must allow that kind of height in, in Cupertino because otherwise it wouldn't be compliant with SB thirty-five. I haven't looked at that part. I'm curious about that. I'll probably look at the developer's statement.
You want to go on to ADUs?
Crazy. That's the left decision.
Yeah, let's, so let's talk about one last requirement or, ADU's, accessory dwelling units, is another, another provision of the housing law that wasn't actually changed last year, as far as I know. But this was changed two years ago. And you, of course, adopted your revised ADU ordinance just this year, just in the last few months. So you're, you know, you're conversant with those issues. But basically, just wanted to highlight it because this might be something you're coming back to sooner than you'd expect. But if you go back to the, the McKinsey report, you remember one of the, the five areas that it showed to obtain additional, obtain additional housing units, one of them was accessory dwelling units or is creating additional units. And the legislature is clearly thinking that this is an easy way to get housing development without the need to provide more infrastructure, more parking, without any complex environmental or SEQA study. So as we were talking about earlier on the traffic issue, this is one where the legislature is saying, we don't care about traffic. We don't care about parking. We don't care about anything. We just want housing. We think this is an easy way to do it. So that's, that's why the law was strengthened in twenty sixteen, even though really the, the ministerial approval provisions of the ADU law actually were in existence. Before that, there were certain, certain requirements that got tightened up. But, you know, the legislature, it looks like it may not be done with this. And we're, we're looking at this Senate Bill eight thirty-one, which, which, like the other bills, did, you know, did pass its first House last week. And if passed the Senate, it's going on to the Assembly soon. And this would delete the ability of the town, cities and counties to impose lot size requirements, lot coverage requirements. Would have a minimum square footage of eight hundred square feet for ADUs. It would provide that no replacement parking space can be required when a garage is converted or any other place that had, that contains a parking space. It would take away the ability of the town to require owner occupancy of one of the units. The, the current legislation says you can allow, you can require owner occupancy of one of the two, either the main house or the ADU. This would say can't require owner occupancy for anything. And it also reduces the approval process timeline in half from a hundred and twenty to a hundred, to sixty days. So some of... So some of, we'll see what, what ends up in this bill if it does in fact pass. Some of these things are very, very significant, though, I think. And of course, many towns, cities, counties have adopted minimum lot sizes for ADU approval, and I believe this bill would take away that, that power. I didn't really look at the, the standards of, of the bill that you passed, and it's probably premature to be really looking at that till, till we see what happens with this. But again, it's something that, that you're gonna want to follow closely, so.
Well, we just kinda have a slide here, sort of, you know, what do we do next? And we, you know, John and I have a couple of suggestions, but obviously vigilance in terms of the next, the pending and future legislation, you're gonna have to stay aware. It seems like you're obviously quite aware, given that Rob is on the Housing Committee at the League, so he's hearing about all this stuff and reporting back to you. You probably wanna get started preparing for your next housing element cycle, because it sounds like you're gonna have a lot of units that you're gonna have to account for and provide for somewhere in this community. And that doesn't sound like it's gonna be an easy task, it's a few years out, but like I said, who knows? They might increase the, speed up the cycle, who knows? And then development of objective standards or other policies to ensure your policy objectives are made. We, we talked about that in the Housing Accountability Act, and there's a lot of good ideas in this room already. But that's what we have in mind. I don't know if any of you have anything else, but John?
John, I just wanna mention, too, that, that, you know, developing the objective standards is, is an important part of this. But I talked about earlier that the funds that are going to become available to the city through the SB 2, the $75 recording fee. Looking on the HCD website, it looks like those funds will become available through a, like NOFA process or, or, you know, some kind of application process, I believe, next year. And it's worth thinking about that as a source of funding for paying the, the planning consultants that might help you develop some of those standards, you know? And it's gotta, it would need to be.
Characterized?
Characterized as, not as a blocking housing, but as something that facilitates the streamlining of housing, housing improvements. And, but I, clearly, there is an interest at the, at HCD in helping local governments to develop those objective standards. And I, I could see that as a, a good funding source for that. The other thing, a totally different idea is, is, is just, you know, the difficulty of, of, of actually getting your affordable housing built. You know, it's, it's in many ways easier to designate land for it than to actually have it built, financed and, and up and running. And, and that's, you know, there are certain funding sources that may be available that, that could help you do that. And if this state bond measure passes, there'll be some money available, there's money available through, through a variety of programs. And this SB 2 money will start becoming available in 2019 and beyond. And so there, there will be some funds available. There's creative ways to get development like that. Finance, and one of the, one of the key needs in these is finding land for the development. We were talking at the break about one new source that's become available in the last few years, and that has been churches and religious institutions that often have large pieces of land. There might be other landowners that have land available and they have some philosophic desire to help affordable housing be built. We've actually worked on a number of projects in the last couple of years where, in the past, the land probably would have been obtained through the redevelopment agency buying the land and making it available to the affordable housing developer. But recently, we've been seeing some of these pieces of land being put together by churches who've carved off a piece of their, their property, if they have an excess-sized site, and making it available, and sometimes even making funding available. So it's, you know, creativity can, can get you there if, you know, if there's some desire to help, help get the affordable housing be built. But it, it does, it does take a lot of creativity. The money, money isn't there just for the taking, it's, it's something that, that require, you know, requires really brainstorming with developers and other community players just to see if there is something available, so.
So let me start off with the, the first question. You didn't really cover very much on how, and, and I realize this is more of a crystal ball question, how the next RENA allocations are gonna be determined? And I, and I'm thinking more about, I'm gonna call it the sins of our current cycle, how much will those be penalizing us in the next cycle, such as if we don't meet the number or we don't meet so many of the low? Will they tack that on top of others? There's people that say, you shouldn't build any office because that generates jobs and you'll then just have to come up with more houses. Can you address it all, where, where we think we're going on those issues?
Well, first of all, that, that's a legislative issue and it's also gonna be a political issue at ABAG, I think. I think one of the bills either had some language in it or already, or currently has some language in it that effectively penalizes agencies that aren't meeting their production numbers and requires you to roll them over. Is it in 828? So for some reason, we didn't put that on the slides, I guess we didn't consider, there were so many other important things in the bill, we didn't, we didn't include that. But yeah, kinda, it makes you meet what you were supposed to meet in the last cycle and then meet some more going forward. So that's gonna be a difficult thing to deal with, and I think that, that kinda answers your question. But I also think it's gonna be a political issue, 'cause now, I think, it's not really ABAG, right? It's MTC and the bigger jurisdictions are controlling things, and I think they're gonna, I think, push things out to the suburbs a little bit more than they have in the past. I don't know, you guys would know that better than I do.
And, and Lo had a bill that didn't go through where he wanted to, if we didn't build on a site, we couldn't use that site next cycle, kinda thing?
Yeah, and that showed up in one of the.
Was it 1397? Okay.
Yeah, like, you can't, if, if, it was a, it was a site that was already developed and it was in your housing element on the last one, which.
It has to be already, it can't be bareland.
Pretty sure it's 1397.
You can't use it again, is the way it was phrased. Let's see, that's new, right? That, that's existing law, right, John?
Yeah, that passed 2017.
Right, so. So the bullet on the right column, the first one, restricts use of non-vacant sites included in one prior, prior housing element and vacant sites included in two prior housing elements. So I think that's the concept that was in that Lo bill, I think. You don't get to do that, you can't use it again. So if it didn't redevelop in the last housing cycle and it was a non-vacant site, you can't use it in the next housing cycle as one, on your inventory.
And there, there was, there is a bill that's going through, AB 1771, did we put that up on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that would also force some changes to the allocation process. I, I think the idea is to give HCD a greater role in the allocation process, and I think there, I think the idea would be to try to cut down on the political process that John was referring to. And, and, you know, we're all aware of, of, of the political nature of the allocation process at the, at the COG level. And I don't know ABAG particularly, but that's been, been a problem. And I think this bill was trying to substitute some, some more objective standards for that political process and seems to reflect some dissatisfaction with the, the way it's been working today.
Yeah, I, I did look at that. I mean, the language says that HCD can determine whether ABAG's RENA allocations further the statutory objectives. Right now, it just says consistent with, it's a little bit stronger. But HCD doesn't really have any approval authority directly over the, over the methodology, so it's, it, I don't know that it's really gonna make a big difference, it's just sort of, they can shame ABAG, but that's about it.
Other questions? Councilmember Sack?
It's not necessarily legal, but more just curiosity. So you mentioned you're attorney for Dublin. Are there any examples that Dublin's doing that you may, you can share with us in how to prepare for any of these upcoming changes that we're not already doing?
I think, I think you are perhaps more sophisticated than Dublin on these issues, so. I don't think Dublin's out in, I mean, they're very politically involved, they're, they're bigger than you are. They've got a, somebody in the House of Representatives that was on the City Council until very recently. So they carry some weight politically, but they get units crammed down on them and they kick and scream about that and say things like, well, we produced a ton of units in the last cycle, why are you hammering us with more? And nobody ever listens. But they also have two BART stations right in the middle of town, so that's why they get hit with the units, 'cause they're in a, they're in a transit-oriented development area. So everyone's dealing with it, they just deal with it in a slightly different way. I think I'm gonna be giving a version of this presentation to the City Council and the Planning Commission in Dublin and get them starting to think about, really about the next housing cycle and how important some of these housing bills are. And they've only just recently turned from kind of a pro-growth community to a kind of slow-growth, no-growth community. They're having trouble figuring out where they are, so it's a little bit different than, than, than Los Gatos.
Commissioner Hanson?
That made me think of another question. When we went through the last housing element, we got a disproportionately larger share than some other jurisdictions that are our size because there's the possibility that there might be a light rail station if someone ever gets the $200 million to build it at Pisona Station. And, 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 and that was repeatedly mentioned as a potential for transit-oriented development, even though the, the funding's not there, nothing's in motion to really make it happen. So how likely is that? And then on top of that, VTA had, has recently come back and reduced our two bus lines to one. So we, we're, you know, regressing in terms of transit. So, I mean, how likely is, and, and given all these changes, that, is this gonna be a factor? I mean, we, it's a crystal ball thing, I, I realize, because it's a few years away.
Yeah, I mean, I've prepared a comment on it.
And then what you said, and then what you were also saying was that, that HCD, ABAG are gonna be more likely to try and put more of those units in places like Los Gatos or Los Angeles Hills because we have higher median incomes.
Well, this is very, I mean, I, you, you make an excellent point. There's a tension, a big tension here between, the fact is, ABAG sort of, ABAG and MTC are sharing staff, but the housing element process is now heavily tied to the, what is the transportation plan called? I can't remember. There's, there's some, every.
Plan B area 2040?
Yeah, but every, the state law requires, period, every eight years for them to update the, the transit plan or transportation plan. So housing is now tied very, very closely with transit and transportation issues and greenhouse gas issues. So it doesn't really make a lot of sense to talk about adding units in Los Gatos because at some point in the future, there might be enough funding for this, for this light rail station. That, that, that's a tension that, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
But it already happened.
Right. So, but I'm saying, it's, it's illogical if you're, if their, if their policy is to, to push the units to sites where people don't have to drive, they're close to, to their workplaces or they can take transit and don't generate a lot of vehicle trips, then why are they putting units in a place where there's not, where you have to drive everywhere? It doesn't make sense. And it also, you can see something similar in the, in 828, where you're saying, they're saying they wanna push units to areas with high median incomes with that, even if they don't have transit. So there's, there's kind of an odd tension there, I just, something worth pointing out.
One thing I also wanted to mention, it may not really address this directly, but we had some conversation, I know that, there's some conversation at the staff level about the authority to, to enter into a, a subregional group for the allocation of the, the housing element numbers. And the, the current law allows cities within a, a county to form their own subregion, and there are subregions formed within, within ABAG already. I think it's Napa, San Mateo and Solano Counties have their own. Those, there's clearly a lot of pros and cons of doing this because those are different types of counties. Here you have, you know, giant, a giant player that, that might dominate, would dominate the process, so. But, but it's, it's certainly one thing that I think is worth looking at if it does have some possibility of, of making that allocation process more fair and, and, you know, more able to look at the local conditions than the current large-scale ABAG process.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier, the phrase was used, it doesn't pencil. And we've also talked tonight about economic feasibility. I've been doing this, I'm not quite sure, 12, 14 years, something, and it's judicial. So it helps for us to have the words to apply, not, not, we make them up, we, we apply what council gives us. I'm saying this to our staff as well as our experts present, is there a community that actually has economic feasibility as, as part of its determination on an application? We've been talking about economic feasibility on certain projects and, and I can't find that anywhere in our codes, in our statutes, in our guidelines. Never seen those two words together in any piece of information that's been given to me to help me decide a case. And if in fact we don't have it, why are we talking about it? And I have a follow-up question to that, if anyone wants to do it.
Well, I'll start, and then I'm sure the attorneys collectively have a number of things to say to that. It probably isn't written, and we typically don't fiscalize land use, so the Planning Commission, even though that comes up a lot at Planning Commission hearings, we try to steer you away from that. And so that's, you know, one piece of the puzzle. And so as it relates to, you know, whether it's findings for economic feasibility and those things, I think that gets more to the court cases and probably the precedent, so I'd defer to the attorneys on that part.
Yeah, I, I mean, where it comes up is if a city imposes significant land use regulations and restrictions in a way that a developer claims makes a project infeasible. It might come up in, in a density bonus context, but developers will argue, well, this is a taking under the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution because I can't make a project pencil out in this community. And you designated for residential and I bought the property thinking I could build residential. That's where it typically comes up. I mean, here developers talking about, oh, this project's not gonna pencil if, if you impose this condition or that condition. And, and that's not really relevant. I mean, you're, you should be focusing on what your findings are in your code and not really whether it makes the developer money. If the condition's imposed and the developer doesn't wanna pursue the project, that's their prerogative. That's how I always present it to my commissions and councils.
And, and, you know, the economic feasibility is written into several areas of the law, and, and the, the main one that I'm aware of is, is in your selection of the sites that go on your housing element inventory. And those you're by statute required to consider the financial feasibility of, of a project being built on that site. But, but then, you know, that's, that's the standard for putting the site on your list, your inventory. But when developers come to you, then, you know, then you're no longer, you don't, you no longer have that requirement to look at the financial feasibility. Then it's, then it's really up to the developer, I think, to see if, if that project works for them. But you're, I, my sense is your responsibility ends after you've put that site on the list.
Well, it's, it's been, may I?
Go ahead.
It's been disturbing me for some time that, that there's a curve, and I'm hearing more and more about economic feasibility. and I'm hearing more and more about economic feasibility. And I'm saying, that's just not my department. If you paid too much for that land, I'm, I'm not happy. But I'm not going to sacrifice the town so that you can make your margin. And, and at least I would say to the commission, that's an argument we just need to not hear. And if we do hear it, we need to make a statement that we're going to ignore it. One final point. If it comes to arguing economic feasibility, depending upon what context that arises in. Years ago, when I negotiated for Firestone and Kaiser, we were schooled, drummed into our heads never to say, "We can't afford that." Our final demand is $10 an hour. Well, we can't afford that. The minute you, as I understood it, I'm not an attorney, the minute you said that under the Taft-Hartley, you've opened up the corporation's books to the unions. So I'd like to, that was the law at the time at least. I'd like to consider something like that, Mr. Town Attorney, that if we hear economic feasibility, then that opens up their books to us, which, which might be a good exercise, but it would also be a deterrent in saying, well, it's not going to be feasible. I'm really hearing too much of it. I'm disturbed by it. I'd like to get rid of it. But if it ever did come up in the, in the future, we should use the Taft-Hartley provision that says, okay, show me your books. Thank you.
So, under the Housing Accountability Act, the economic feasibility language is used throughout that. So it is one of the criteria about making a project, housing project economically infeasible. So it is used in there. It's, developers don't want to use that because if they do use that as a potential reason, yes, it could very well open up the books and you can go through that process. I think that's what John was saying, in the, in the unique circumstance where they do, then they'd have to. So that's a potential. That was never brought up in the one we've talked about tonight because of course they didn't want to go there. The other part I was talking about where it's, it's the economic issue is more the impedement. And if you remember in a housing element when we chose sites and HCD said, yeah, you've chosen these sites, but they're not really sites. You're, you're, you're a shell game. They're not sites. And that's where I'm saying that if you were to, I, you know, we can look into it, but if you were taking the 20 units per acre and you now say you're going to make them 500 square feet, you know, have you now made that, you're great. You've got your units that can be built and you've met your RENA numbers. But would HCD say, "By reducing that square footage, you've now impeded the development of housing because it just simply is not capable of being produced at that housing element?" So we'd really have to make some findings and studies to show. And 500, I think, is an extreme. I don't think anybody's looking for that low. Is it 1,500? Is it 2,000? We can't just grab a number out. We're going to have to have some studies and findings to show that based on a market rate of what an acre costs in Los Gatos, it can be produced and 20 units can be produced at that size and make a profit. And then we could make that change to make that size workable instead of just pulling one out of the air.
If I could comment on that, I think we probably don't want to be trying to make economic analysis arguments at the planning commission level or, well, on, on an individual review. It should be when we're, when we're doing more of the planning, if we're doing a specific plan for a site or we're trying to figure out our, our housing element or if a project comes forward that applies directly for our, now I'm starting to get back to the one. But, you know, if, if it looks like it's going to get us, I guess what I'm trying to say, maybe hoove us to think that way so we don't get into these penalty situations where we now, you know, the developer comes with houses and say, well, I can't meet that. I'm going to give you this other, more market rates and the Housing Accountability Act says we have to take it. Now we have to go zone another piece of property to cover our RENA numbers. So we're getting penalized by not thinking through what is it going to take to get the RENA numbers built. That's, that's my point anyway. And I don't think I want to get to, you know, the planning commission having to ask these questions, but we need to strategize when we're trying to meet our RENA numbers with that in mind. And, and I know, and I wanted to say that, you know, the comments I got, I sounded like the old world of thinking about how we do land use planning. We're in a new world where they're changing the rules on us, so we need to be careful about whether we need to think a little bit differently.
And I think just to add to that or to, to comment on that is it'll be a much different exercise when we're allocating numbers of units for our sites inventory and what category we're putting those in, especially given the, the rules that are currently either in play or maybe in play by the time we get to that point. That's important. Like the other thing is, you know, the reality is the town doesn't see a whole lot of housing projects. A lot of the times when we hear the economic feasibility, it's really commercial projects that we're looking at. So these don't even help from that standpoint. Now, who knows, next year, the year after, they might go down the commercial path and we have similar bills. But I think for the most part, you know, we don't see a whole lot of large housing projects, but given the new laws, we may start seeing more. So we just want to make sure that we're prepared and we'll definitely give you that advice should that come up in the future.
And I would think of one, because the one that comes to mind that went to the planning commission though that was a small one was the Roberts Road, four units that met all of our objective standards, but it went through, I think, three planning commission hearings. And you put quite a lot of conditions on there that were more with that neighborhood compatibility, subject, subjective criteria that you were able to do. And you did finally approve that project, but those are the ones that you think about how we could possibly put those standards that would allow that development to be approved at the first time with some of those requirements that you had. And that's what, kind of one that I come to mind of, and if there's any other ones, please share it with staff that you can think of. Because we don't have very, we don't have the large, large, I mean, he, he mentioned 260 as being small. I mean, that's large, that's huge for us. But I think we will see 6, 4, 8, 10, 12, which for our community are large developments. And how do we wrestle with the housing accountability and the density bonuses where we're trying to spend as much time? So as you think through other past projects, you know, what, what could we do to strengthen our ordinances to make sure we're getting these projects that comply with the community look and feel that we want?
Other questions? Seeing none? Any, any wrap, any wrap-up? Well, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Mayor, do members of the public want to speak?
Yes, I was going to check in. I, I'll open the verbal testimony on this subject item. Does anybody wish to say anything? Thank you for reminding me. You can fill out your card later. We'll have Maria Risto. Looks, looks like followed by Lee Cantana.
Oh my gosh. I guess this was a really difficult presentation because I don't understand what to do with the information. So I'm not sure what pathway you have. But having sat on the housing element, I think what was really difficult is that we were told all cities can do is plan. We don't own the land. The only land we own that we're even talking about affordable housing right now is Dido's Lane. But the rest of the land is all at market rate. We were told in a suburban setting like Los Gatos, 20 units an acre is affordable. That would allow affordable housing to be built. We knew when the North Forty project was being discussed for a year in advance, it wasn't going to be affordable. But we were still able to go ahead and put that on there with the 50 units, knowing that there was an agreement with the school district for market rate housing. And all these pieces are there. Now we're going to be punished for the fact that we were told that at 20 units an acre, we did our part without being handed tools by the state where, I mean, what the heck are we supposed to do on the next housing element? Is there another number that's going to be acceptable? 30? 60 units an acre? No open space? Just by virtue of saying that we're going to decrease the unit size doesn't make it affordable. If we require 30% open space, if we require traffic mitigation, if we require agreements with the schools, if we require height limitations, there is a cost to the land. And I don't understand how a town is supposed to come up with rules that meet our standards and then when the market doesn't allow those units to be affordable because they're not subsidized at any great extent, that we now are punished. So it sounds like we are never going to get our affordable housing built in this way. That pessimism aside, I think what I would like to see is an attitude by the town of, do we want affordable housing? Why do we want it? Where do we want it? And how can we achieve it? I'm looking at downtown Los Gatos. It's a very walkable place. Our bus route, the length of the bus route may have been decreased, but the time that it runs and the frequency of it is increased with the new route. And I'm not saying we should put a ton, you know, like a whole bunch of high rises, but if you look at a traffic impact, go hang out at the penthouse apartments. There's 80 units there. There is not a lot of traffic. I know people that live there. These are studio, one-bedroom places. It's a walkable location. And we do need affordable housing downtown because essentially nobody who works downtown can live there. Go to any hairdresser, any service place, any shop. Everybody I talk to lives over the hill because they can't afford to live here. My son is desperately looking for a place to live. He'll be lucky if he can live 20 miles away and he works downtown. So we know that we have to go back to the integrated town that we used to have where people could, where we had people of all income levels. When I moved here 30 years ago, there were a lot of inexpensive rentals. There was a diversity of income levels. And I think sometimes we try so hard to preserve the look of our buildings without preserving the diversity of people that we had. So I'm hoping that as we look at the general plan, we're not just doing it, oh, yeah, thank you. I'm not, that we're not doing it just defensively. We want to preserve what we love about Los Gatos, but we also want to promote what we need to have to have a sustainable town.
Any questions for Ms. Risto? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Lee Cantana?
I'll second everything that Maria said. I'd also like to comment that it seems to me that it would be very useful if we could get our legislature at the end of the year before they approve all these bills on housing to look at the total package together to see how they're conflicting with one another and fix the conflicts. Because it seems to me some of the bills are fighting the other bills and it's almost impossible. It's a no-win, no-win situation, it seems to me. Back to Maria's comment that when she first moved here, there was much more diversity in the town, especially in the downtown area. I will second that. It was one of the reasons why we moved here. Seems to me that aside from providing affordable housing, by the definition of affordable housing, there's also a real need for the, the missing middle. This town is increasingly going towards very high-income housing and maybe some affordable housing under, under these laws. But there's very little in the middle. And I believe that one of the ways that could be accomplished, in a sense, it would be taking it back a little bit to the way it was earlier, is the compatibility issue, the visual compatibility issue. There are lots of houses in this town that are 4,000 and 5,000 square feet. 4,000 and 5,000 square feet can accommodate three to five units and look like a single-family house. And that has to do with how you set up your zoning code. Is what I've always talked about is, is understanding the difference between density and intensity. Density is the number of units. Intensity is the size of the building. Well, you can have the same-sized building and have four units or you can have that same building and have one unit. The density is very different. The intensity and the look is the same. And the question is, how can that be possibly built into our, our zoning code? That's just one of the millions of questions and responses that I have after this, but I think it's important. And we need to look at our zoning code carefully.
Any questions for Ms. Cantana? Seeing none, thank you. I have no more cards, so I'll close the verbal testimony. Would any councilmembers like to make comments? Councilmember Sack or commissioners?
I just wanted to, I guess the, the lesson learned from the last legislative session as well as this is just that how imperative it is for all of us, I'm looking at my colleagues as well as those in the audience, to really pay attention to what's happening at the state legislature. Senator Weiner is very aggressive in promoting more housing, but to his credit, he is open for discussion. And I think the, the changes that we're seeing with 827 and 828 is due to the conversations that are being had. And so I urge colleagues that are interested. The Cities Association has a legislative tracker, the League of Cities. Mr. Schultz mentioned that he participates in that. And it really is amazing how there is a lot of conversation going on right now that can modify the wording and that's currently being looked at. And, and I know right now the Bloom and the 828, when that comes to committee, I think that's going to be very, very important to Los Gatos, how that actually is going to be modified so that, that it will affect us drastically.
Okay, other comments? Seeing none, then I'm going to adjourn us. Thank you very much, everybody.